Well, yeah. Gentlemen. Run. Hello, everyone. Welcome to this meeting of the South Kingstown Town Council. It is Monday, March 11th. The time is 7:30. Our first order of business, as always, is the pledge to the flag. Today, we have some special guests here from the Girl Scouts. I'm going to ask you all to come forward and lead us in the pledge. Can hold on to the cookies for now. Take us away whenever any of you wants to start.
(inaudible) 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 Thank you.
Thank you all.
Can you do it? Sure. I can't file. I mean, I can't do it. (inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Perfect. Thank you. Well, we're going to, before we get to anything else on the agenda, we'll bring item, well, first, take the roll, please.
Council President Collins.
Here.
Council Vice President DeCruz.
Here.
Councilwoman Kelso.
Here.
Councilman McAtee.
Here.
Councilman Veale. All members present.
Thank you. And then, with that out of the way, we'll bring forward item 12A under New Business. This is a resolution adopting a proclamation recognizing Girl Scout Week as March 10th through March 16th. And I'll read this long, boring thing for you, so bear with me, girls. Tuesday, March, whereas Tuesday, March 12th, 2019, marks the 107th anniversary of Girl Scouts of the USA founded by Juliette Gordon Low in 1912 in Savannah, Georgia; and whereas through Girl Scouting, girls grow in courage, confidence, and character, and learn to make the world a better place. And throughout its long and distinguished history, Girl Scouts, the preeminent organization for girls, has inspired millions of girls and women with the highest ideals of character, conduct, and patriotism. And whereas Girl Scouting takes an active role in increasing the interest and skill levels of today's youth in math, science, and technology careers, and to fulfill our country's economic needs; and whereas through participation in Project Undercover, a council-wide community service project, every girl will learn that she can make a change for the better in her community; and whereas the Girl Scout Cookie Sale is the world's largest girl-led business, teaching financial literacy to girls of all ages; and whereas the Girl Scouts of southeastern New England, which serves 12,000 girls in Rhode Island, in the Rhode Island area, will be celebrating 106 years of an American tradition with more than 3.4 million current Girl Scout members nationwide. Now, therefore, we, the Town Council of the Town of South Kingstown, do hereby proclaim the week of March 10th through 16th, 2019, as Girl Scout Week in the Town of South Kingstown, and urge our citizens to support Girl Scouts in their endeavors. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve 12A.
Second.
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Who would like this proclamation?
Thank you. (applause)
And thank you very much for the cookies, and we are amazed to see so many Girl Scouts in the audience, and that's a really good thing. And we've had other Girl Scout troops in here, but not as many as tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
(inaudible)
No. Item four on our agenda tonight is the approval of minutes of previous meetings.
Motion to approve 4A and B.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously, and that brings us to the consent agenda. Do I?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, item number five.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries as well. Item six, licenses. 6A is a resolution granting a miscellaneous permit to conduct the BRMS Crazy Coyote Chase 5K and One Mile Fun Run on Saturday, April 6th, to Broad Rock Middle School, school PTO, 351 Broad Rock Road of Wakefield, subject to the execution of a Hold Harmless Agreement, indemnifying the town issuance of a certificate of insurance naming the town as an additional insured for the event and the amounts specified by the finance director, and approval by the Traffic and Transportation Review Committee. Application by Kathryn Lang.
Hello.
Hello. So just state your name for the record, and this is obviously not the first time that this race has been before us, but describe it a little bit, anyway.
I'm Kathryn Lang.
I'm Christine Palmieri. And the race is a fundraiser for the students at Broad Rock Middle School. It starts at nine, the 5K starts at nine, and then the Fun Run, One Mile Run, starts at 10. And this is the seventh year. So we are asking for a...
Please.
Are you guys really with the route this year? Is it different or the same?
We're going to make sure the coyote goes the right way. Last year, there was a bit of a mishap. There won't be this year. We're labeling everything.
So how would one go about signing up for the race?
There's an online registration. Active.com. Search Crazy Coyote Chase 2019. And there's also the Facebook page. And if you go to Broad Rock, you can look on the, everything comes home daily.
Is it too late, what is it called? Donate or sponsor?
Never too late.
I knew the answer. I just wanted to make sure people knew that.
Always welcoming sponsors. Or donations. Yes, or raffle items.
All right. Any other questions? Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion that we approve item 6A.
Second.
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good luck.
Luck.
6B is a resolution granting a miscellaneous permit to conduct the South County Health Centennial 5K Road Race on Saturday, May 11th, at 9:00 a.m., to South County Health, subject to the execution of a Hold Harmless Agreement, indemnifying the town issuance of a certificate of insurance naming the town as an additional insured for the event and the amount specified by the finance director, and approval by the Traffic and Transportation Review Committee. Carrie Brown. Hello. And just state your name for the record, even though I just said it.
Yeah, I'm Carrie Brown. I'm with South County Health. We are bringing back our 5K. We used to have it years ago, and we're bringing it back for the centennial year. We do have a new route this year because of the bridge construction on Silver Lake. We didn't want to risk it not being open, so rather than get nervous, we came up with a new route. I worked with the police department on a new route that actually includes Marina Park. I went last week and got approval from the Waterfront Commission for the use of a section of Marina Park walking paths, and it'll go through the hospital neighborhood. So it's a fundraiser for cancer services.
Can you walk it, or do you have to run it?
You can walk or run. We have plenty of sponsorship still available. You can go to the South County Health website and find it on there, and we're hoping to raise upwards of $25,000 for the cancer event.
Any questions on this one? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve 6B.
Second.
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Good luck.
6C is a resolution granting a miscellaneous permit to conduct a sprint-distance triathlon on September 15th, at 6:00 a.m., to stomp fish on, or doing business as "on your left" racing. This is subject to execution of a Hold Harmless Agreement, indemnifying the town, issuance of a certificate of insurance naming the town as an additional insured for the event and the amount specified by the finance director, approval by RIDOT and the Traffic and Transportation Review Committee. Derek Savis.
Good evening. If you can state your name.
Yeah. My name's Derek Savis.
Amy Rice.
Welcome. So tell us a little bit about the triathlon. I think most of us are probably familiar with the concept, but...
So we have a normal start at South Kingstown Town Beach at 8:00 a.m. We're asking for 6:00 a.m. because athletes will arrive at that time. There'll be swim, bike, run. We've been approved by RIDOT and Charlestown and South Kingstown as far as the course. The course will take you out on a road that goes by, either by the sea.
Cards Pond.
Cards Pond.
Cards Pond, then on to, left at the...
Tunic Schoolhouse Road?
Right. Or...
Probably need to go on to Moonstone, and then...
That is, Moonstone, right?
And then...
All the way down to Charlestown, and then back on 1A on Route 1, and then on to Tunic Schoolhouse Road and back in. And then the run section, which will be a 3.1-mile run, will run into the Blueberry Hills section, and then come back and finish at Beaches.
Any questions? All right. Do I hear a motion on this one?
Motion to approve 6C.
Second.
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good luck.
Luck.
Good luck.
And 6D is a resolution granting a miscellaneous peddler license to Cottage Chic Decor of 439 Wandsworth Street in Narragansett, subject to issuance of a retail sales tax permit, application by Maureen Lawton.
Hello. How are you?
Hello.
My name is Maureen Lawton. I have applied to the Town of South Kingstown, among other local towns, for a peddler's license, and I was summoned, so I'm here. I gave you a handout, and I'm probably just going to basically read what I'm all about. I'm starting a new business this spring in South County, and it's called Cottage Chic Decor. It's going to be a mobile pop-up shop. It's going to be in my vintage camper, my 1954 camper that I bought, and I gutted, and it's going to be basically a blank palette for me to decorate and sell my wares. I love to decorate. I love to create a beautiful home for me and my clients. I had a small business in Connecticut for many years. It was called Mo's Attic, and it was in the shop set Marlborough Barn in Marlborough, Connecticut. I developed a following of customers that loved what I did and loved what I sold, so I've moved now to Rhode Island permanently, and I'm going to go at it a little bit differently. I'll be selling my wares, which include vintage and new textiles, lemons, bedding, curtains, things like that, lighting, home decor, recycled items, and small cottage furniture. This will also help me advertise my decorating skills. I love to decorate. And, well, I'm just going to basically read this part. "In hopes that people who don't know how to put it all together in their homes or beach cottages can call on me. I'll not, I will not only help them find treasures for their homes, but be their consultant if they need me, and at a very reasonable price. I'm hoping that I'll be a unique shop in the area and one that people will love. I'm going to plan on going wherever the town allows me to go. I know you have a lot of town ordinances, as do many of the other towns, especially Narragansett, where I live. And I have a couple of friends that have large pieces of land, private property, on very, you know, visible roads, which would be perfect, so that's why I'm here, to get a peddler's license."
Any questions up here?
So I have a couple of questions. Mike, my first question is, we have a lot of restrictions on where you can park.
Yes.
But private commercial property is acceptable, correct? If you had an owner that allowed that trailer on their private commercial lot?
If it's got to conform to zoning.
Okay.
So that could be a zoning issue.
Right. And my other concern is...
Is that just in South Kingstown, or is that in general?
No, in general.
I mean, a lot of towns have restriction, zoning restrictions, where they don't allow
someone to put a trailer or something on a parking lot in the area where there are commercial establishments.
Okay. It's not something that would stay there? It would, it would be there for business hours only and then be gone? It's not like, and it's a tiny little camper?
So what I would suggest is, if you want to do something like that, as opposed to, you know, moving around the town, you would have to check with the...
Zoning. Okay. That's good to know. But I also do want to do it in town wherever I might be allowed to. I know there's a lot of restrictions.
Have you spoken to the police department with...
Oh, yeah.
So you know, yeah.
Yeah, he gave me the...
Good.
The whole thing, and...
You have to continuously move, like you can't park on the street and stay there all day.
Okay. Continuously move, like, what? Every 20 minutes, or?
Continuous.
Well, that would be impossible.
The peddler's license is designed with sort of the folks who sell stuff at the parade in mind, the folks who have a cart that they're pushing with, you know, balloons, and that's the...
I know that, you know, there are food trucks, and there's those kinds of trucks around, but that's a completely different animal, and I know that this is pretty new in this area. You don't see things like this. But I'm hoping that I can work with the town so that I can open this.
Well, you, you might find a piece of property in town where the zoning is correct, where you could open up shops, so to speak, but you would need to find that piece of property.
Okay. So are you saying that there are no streets in the Town of South Kingstown that will allow me to sell my wares at all?
Correct. Although, one thought occurs to me, and that is, to the extent that what you're selling is as consulting service, if the vehicle comes with you on your, on your consulting gig, it's your means of transportation. It's not, it's not your warehouse, or your...
Well, it's attached to my means of transportation.
Right. I mean, we allow trailers for landscapers who are mowing lawns. We allow trailers for folks who...
Right.
Are bringing their, their tools with them. And to the extent that you're bringing your tools with you, that's a different situation.
So is there no way to break any barriers in South Kingstown to allow a small, little pop-up shop that wouldn't be obstructing anything?
What is the time limit, by the way, for, what does that mean exactly?
You're supposed, I think of an ice cream truck.
I'm not a cart.
You know? Think of an ice cream, or the lemonade truck, or that type of thing, where, you know, you stop, you sell stuff, and then you move on. So there isn't a time limit, but per se, but certainly, I think what the applicant wants to do is park a trailer somewhere all day long and sell, and provide services from it. And we don't, we don't have...
So remember in the past when we had, was it the, the food truck situation? Again, they had to keep moving, or at one point, they might have parked at Bennys or something like that?
Actually...
So, yeah, yeah.
So we're, I'll talk a little bit about food trucks during the manager's report because we are in the middle right now of working through a new ordinance because the state has changed the rule with regard to food trucks. But until July 1st, January 1st or July 1st, depending on how you read the state law, food trucks are under the same limit as what we're describing here. Food trucks need to keep moving. They're, we don't have food trucks that occupy a space on the street for the whole day or for the lunch hour. They sell and they move on, and that's why, in part, why we don't have a lot of food trucks in South Kingstown.
Can I ask a question about that? What about food trucks that are like at Sons of Liberty? Is that because they're a private property?
There, the issue, the question is zoning, and it's also part of the discussion that we're having locally. We're trying to make sure that we're bringing everybody into compliance with our zoning regulations as well.
Okay. For instance, in Narragansett, they have Food Truck Night, and I called the rec. department to ask if I could be part of that, and they refused me. They, you know, but I am a very similar entity. I'm just not serving food. You know, I have to be stationary.
It's cer, I mean, the council is going to be contemplating a new set of rules with regard to food trucks. It certainly is reasonable for the council to consider non-food trailer trucks as part of that conversation. To, we, it's a bifurcated problem, though. We have both licensing piece of it, and we have the zoning piece of it. The planning board will be doing their review of the ordinance, I believe, next, tomorrow, perhaps. It's either tomorrow night or next, next Tuesday. The planning board will be at least initially looking at an ordinance that has been drafted by the town solicitor's office, and we're going to start that process. The council is scheduled at this point to have a review of that, I want to say, mid-March with a public hearing, in all likelihood, the first meeting of June. And then the state regulation supersedes all local regulation, not then enacted if we don't do anything. We're under the state law completely on July 1st. So we're on a fairly tight timeline to do something about food trucks. If we're going to expand it beyond food trucks, we're going to need to move quick. We know how to dance.
So, Maureen, you've heard the difficulties that lie before you. Are you still seeking the license? You, I mean, basically, Maureen would need...
Yeah, it doesn't sound like the license that you're seeking is going to be able to accommodate what you want to do. Because the only license they can give you this evening is a peddler's license, which would require you to constantly move. If that's not your intent...
But I would need a peddler's license even if I'm on private property. No? I wouldn't.
You'd have to comply with the zoning for that parcel of land.
But I wouldn't need a license.
Retail sales. Retail sales license, but it wouldn't be a peddler's license.
I also have some, a bit of concern about actually people going into a trailer. Is there only one means of enter and exit? Because, I don't know. I spent a long time in a chamber of commerce, and I, I have dealt with this issue in Narragansett, actually, and I know there were issues of people going into a trailer and not being able to get out of a trailer. So I don't know, I don't know the fire codes, but you might want to investigate that as well.
Okay. I gave you a picture of it. It's really tiny, so it's not like you could crowd a bunch of people in there and not get back out. Like, only a couple of people would go in at a time.
And I, I mean, no one is more supportive of small business than me. You know, I ran a chamber of commerce. I know what it takes to do what you do, but I want you to be in compliance with our ordinances so you'll be successful.
Okay. Thank you.
And I have a question. Are you, is your intent to sort of deal with one client at a time? Is that this?
No.
Okay. So this isn't...
Open to the public as a shop.
Got it. Okay.
Right. A mobile shop.
So, Mr. President, if I may, my suggestion would be you give me a call in the morning, and we'll try to get you in touch with the right folks and work through the problems. I'm not sure there's an immediate solution. I'm not sure there's a solution that doesn't call for a new ordinance, which would be entirely a decision by the Town Council, but I'd be happy to sit down with you and work through what we can and figure out if there's a path forward.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Pop-up shops are the, are a thing, right? And, and I think it's a great idea. I just think we need to think it through a little further.
So I still, depending on what happens, I still would like to get a peddler's license. You don't think it's...
Not what you need. You need a retail sales...
Right.
What do you mean? I've applied, I've gotten all my tax IDs, everything.
I think what I would suggest to you and the council for purposes tonight, if you, if you even wanted to continue this, I don't think this is going to help her. Let her have the conversation tomorrow and see where we go.
Sounds good.
Do we need a motion to continue?
Why don't you table it, actually? Why don't, a motion to table.
Do I hear such a motion?
I'll make a motion to table. Where are we? I don't know where we're at. 6D.
Second.
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That brings us all the way to communications. Letter L, a letter dated February 21st, 2019, from Richard Casper, Board Director, Teftill Farm Homeowners Association, requesting the installation of stop signs at two intersections on Chestnut Hill Road. That's been received and placed on file. Suppose the appropriate place would be the Traffic Review Committee? John Shaw, Chief?
Joe Jaber, Chief of Police. Yes, we, we have received the same letter that the Town Council received, and we put that down for the March 21st meeting, Traffic Commission meeting, and also, we have officers studying the area and doing the traffic sort of... So we are handling that, and, so it ends up...
Great. Thank you. So we need a motion to place this on file, I think.
A motion to place 7L on file.
Second.
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Letter M is a letter dated March 5th, 2019, from James O'Neil, requesting the public release of documents related to allegations of sexual harassment involving a council member. Received, placed on file, and I see Jim in the audience.
Following up with two months of activity on this, back on January 7th, you got a letter from Schofield and Soderberg regarding the president's comments, followed by, on January 14th, Town Manager informs the council, he's received a number of emails, et cetera, et cetera, regarding sexual harassment. He's working with the town solicitor. And we keep moving forward. Next thing, on February 11th, discussion, communication, February 1, from Sarah Marky, requesting the council to make public a copy of a confidential report relative to allegations of sexual harassment regarding a council member. of sexual harassment regarding a council member. And, as you know, February 25, Mr. Rissolo's associate distributed meeting, excuse me, a document memo, if you will, revised version of a memo to the council relating to the February 11th letter from Sarah Markey. So, that's where I am right now. I'm, I'm looking forward to some release of the documents, and so I guess through you, asking the solicitor where we stand on all this.
Yeah, I actually, I knew you'd be here, so I have a hand-delivered envelope with everything that we can release at this point, and I'm, and I'm going to give this to you this evening. I'm more than happy to discuss it with you, you know, in my, at my office or whatever.
Okay. What I didn't know here, was I asking this personally or to, like Ms. Markey, asking whatever it says in there?
It's pers-
To the public? What, what does it say?
It's, what we're giving you can go to anyone, but I responded to your specific request.
Okay. And you did redact that attachment three, all the names. They asked you, make sure you redacted those names. I think Ms. Kelso asked that at the last February meeting to make sure there's confidentiality there.
So, the, the actual complaints themselves, those email complaints, we have not released to anyone. We haven't released them to Sarah Mar- we haven't released those to anyone because the individuals who sent them to the manager have not given us permission to release them. But the stuff I'm giving you is public, it's released.
Okay. And I guess the other question I have, because your associate, there's quite a bit of discussion that, that-
Amy Goins, yes.
Yeah, the late February meeting as to, and I was certainly agreeing with her, that the council, they're not employees, they're subject to ethics violations, et cetera, et cetera. But a couple of these complainants, and I'm just looking at the language that the manager used on the previous tapes here, copy of letters sent to, and I'm quoting, employee and/or a person employed through the town who were complainants. Are those letters in there? This is attachment A.
No.
Actually, the template is.
Right.
No names, but the letters that went to those complainants are in there.
Tell, and giving them all their rights in terms of, since you've made this complaint, here is what you can do. Here's what you can do to follow up. And we list all of the various agencies, et cetera, that they can pursue the matter with.
Okay. What is, what are my rights or anyone in town's rights to pursue the matter between the employee and the council member?
I don't think there are any rights. The, it would be up to the employee to do that. The employee has the right to follow up along the lines of what we put in the letter, but you as a member of the public or another member of the public would not have the ability to do that on behalf of an employee.
Then the council member released what the charge was against that particular person from that complainant who was employee.
To the best of my knowledge, the council has never seen any personnel-sensitive information regarding either the employee or the person employed through the town. Those matters were handled as personnel matters under the harassment ordinance and policy, and our ordinance and policy requires confidentiality be maintained.
Right. So, we have no rights then to that employee's letter?
No.
Is that state law, federal?
Oh, it's private, no, it's-
I know the personnel matters, but this is a private citizen up here who's a council person versus an employee. Doesn't that find its way to the public arena?
It would if the employee, and it's the employee's right, chose to pursue this in other arenas as outlined in the letter, which you are getting a copy of. Doesn't say who the employee is, it just is, as Rob said, it's the template so that you can see what we sent even though you don't know who it was sent to.
So, we have to interpret all of our internet activity then as to, but speculation.
Through you, Mr. President, if I may. The, the policy that we're trying to, to strike here is a balance between the need for people who feel they need confidentiality, feel that they are in danger of being retaliated against or in some way having their interests harmed, coming to government and saying, "We think there's a problem." These women have come to the government and said, "We think there's a problem. We'd like to tell you about it. Will you accept information in confidence?" And we said, "Yes. We want to investigate the problem. We want to make sure that if there is a problem, we know about it and can resolve it." The, the cost to making sure that we can remedy an issue is knowing that we have an issue as identified by confidential communications. The state law, local ordinances, say that with regard to personnel files and personnel matters, there is an expectation of privacy among public employees to some extent. It's not an absolute expectation of privacy, but certain information is protected under state and local law. So, we've got to balance that as well. The documents that are being released tonight should give you and any member of the public a fair understanding of what government has done. We outline what, what steps we have taken with information that was presented to us. What it doesn't present is the information that was presented confidentially to the government. And my, the way I've described this before is, the public has a right to everything that we own. We don't own these women's stories. We don't own the information that was presented.
So, is, do we have in there then the decision that was made by the council in that executive session? As to any penalties, any procedure, anything going on?
So, the decision made by the council was actually made in an open session after an executive session, so that is a matter of public record, and I don't know whether there's a record that reflects that in here. I don't recall, to be honest with you.
It's basically, it's basically upda- well, it's in the minutes. It's basically up-
It's sealed.
No, no, of the post-executive, right?
Yeah. The, the public minutes, after they came out of executive session, they talked about enhancing our policies, working on making sure that they were transparent and workable and doable, and in other words, making them better than what they are now.
So, actually, that refreshes my recollection, and yes, there's a summary of that in one of the documents that's in here.
A summary, but not particular recommendations?
Oh, no.
By specific council members?
I don't believe that there's a record in here that says council person A said X and council person B said Y.
You could certainly get the minutes of that meeting. I did not include those minutes in here. But the summary is in here.
And there would be a tape on that as well, so.
I'm just concerned, because all the people that came to speak here back in January, I got the list, everyone else, the newspapers, I mean, this was just an incredible effort. Internet folks probably reached 40 or 50, and is this, I mean, this is incredible. You were ready to impeach and hang someone, and yet, everyone's disappeared here. This is phenomenal. And yet, the internet, they can get away with saying things because we're not smart enough to print what's said there or shown there for the few hours it's up. This is incredible that someone had to suffer through this.
Mr. President, if I may, I would say we certainly didn't have at, in my office or in the solicitor's office or anyone in, in town hall an impeach and, and, you know, convict orientation here. In fact, the investigation was just an administrative investigation. It consisted entirely of receiving information and determining whether or not a statute or a policy was violated. That's, that was not a, a convict or impeach orientation. It was simply to determine whether any statutes or policies were violated. When we determined that no statutes and no policies were violated, that's, that ended the administrative inquiry.
Then, and this is in the letter, Jim, on January 28th, that's the meeting that we're referring, the council, the council didn't take any formal action but agreed that the following steps should be taken. One, update the town's sexual harassment policy to provide that elected officials and members of boards and commissions are subject to its terms. And two, revising the council's code of conduct. So, that's the action that the council took as a result of the complaints that were made. And again, each of the individuals who made the complaints were basically told, "You have these following options to follow up on if you so choose to do so," but that would be up to those individuals.
Okay. Well, it just doesn't seem that, with the uprising that was taking place in January seems to have been quietly buried. It's too bad that the internet is allowed to get away with so much information, so much accusatory work, and then can disappear. And, but I just, I've been through this myself, and I, I think what happened here with the councilman is outrageous. It was a lynching. It was a lynching with me, and I'm furious about this. So, this is really-
The internet is a very double-edged sword.
You know, I, I know what you're saying, but it's really skirting the decision-making that-
Thank you. So, maybe a motion to place this on file.
I'll make a motion, place seven M on file.
Second.
So, moved, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item N is an email from Councilman McIntee requesting a discussion of a homestead exemption in South Kingstown. So, we discussed this a little bit in the work session, but why don't you take it away?
So, I believe there's a lot of concerns in town around the potential for rising taxes in the forthcoming years. You know, as we look through the proposed budget, we see various increases in spending to, to various departments. We also see an increase in the property tax transfer requested by the school, and we're also working or planning on capital investment to the schools in the forthcoming years. So, in order to offset the potential increases in taxes onto the residents, I'd like to suggest that the council direct the town manager as well as the finance director to look into the feasibility of a homestead exemption. This is something that is common in other communities, Narragansett, for example. Obviously, we have different circumstances in Narragansett. Approximately 50% of their homeowners are non-residents. I believe in SK, that amount is approximately 20%. You know, but we do need to keep in mind, you know, how this affects all the stakeholders in town. You know, we don't want to negatively impact local businesses, but we also want to look at ways to attract new young homeowners. You know, one of the things in SK that's a clear issue is the rising median price of houses. I think it's around 350,000 right now, and you know, for people who are young professionals, you know, in their late twenties, early thirties, that's not something that's exactly feasible. So, if this is something that can help us attract, you know, more young families or new young people, or just something that'll benefit, you know, all the residents of SK, I think we should look into it.
Rob, did you want to discuss just briefly sort of your initial-
We're happy to look into this in much more detail. I will say that an initial review or survey of the challenges that come up around homestead exemptions is, as, as Councilman McIntee points out, it creates a situation where commercial properties can be disadvantaged in the, in the tax scheme because properties owned by residents that they reside in, in other words, residential property, are taxed at a lower rate than commercial property even if owned by a resident. And that is actually a common characteristic of all of the exemptions that I've seen here in Rhode Island. There's also administrative difficulties around simply following up and making sure that the property owner who claims an exemption is in fact living in the property and not simply filing a piece of paper to say that he or she is, you got to go in January and make sure that the folks whose tax bill went to Connecticut actually are living there in January and that kind of thing. Takes time and, and energy, and to be honest with you, it just takes manpower. You've got to be able to send people out to do that sort of investigation. There's also things like tracking down, you know, mid-year transfers or transfers throughout the year. Somebody may be eligible and sell to somebody who's intending to use the home as a summer home, so you've got to, you got to calculate that sort of thing. There are challenges, but we're happy to put together a report and explain all of that and, and the advantages of doing so. We'd be happy to investigate and report back.
I think one of the other things I would look into also is, you know, we're talking about making it more affordable, and I think if you have a exemption of some sort, there could be people that are renting properties that that extra cost will potentially fall upon.
We, that actually is, Providence used to have a homestead exemption. Apparently, they no longer have a homestead exemption. They now have a differential between owner occupied and renter occupied, so it does have an impact in that case, and in fact, even, even, and a home, yes, a homestead exemption would impact renters disproportionately because the property's not going to be eligible for the homeowner residential homestead. So, yes, there's a potential impact on renters. There's also a potential impact on the desirability for non-residents. You know, maybe 20, 25, 30% of the folks who own property in South Kingstown are folks who only use it for seasonal, the property for seasonal uses. Is Charlestown more appealing? Is that the difference that, you know, has made South Kingstown more appealing than Narragansett? We don't know the answer to these questions. We just, we're going to have to look into it.
Charlestown becomes more appealing to a lot of people because their tax rate is significantly less.
And if more of the, remember, with a homestead exemption, what you're doing is you're shifting that portion that isn't now being paid by folks who reside in their property onto those, so you're not just increasing the rate for the folks at the sort of natural increase rate, if you will. You're adding the additional burden of the costs that are not being borne by locals. There's also questions of equity, such as, you know, the folks who are seasonal, while, you know, they're not here in the, in the school year in the winter, aren't demanding services, and yet, we're asking them to pay a higher portion of the overall tax bill. It can get, it can get, it can get difficult to figure out what the right thing to do is in that environment.
So, a lot of the things you're talking about, Rob, are operational for staff and that kind of stuff. The concern that I have is that usually the, the driver to go to a homestead exemption is that our, our taxes are too high, and that's the ultimate problem that we need to fix. So, take round numbers. If you've got $100 million budget and all of a sudden you shift to non-owner occupied houses, a higher burden, you haven't fixed the problem, you've just made it disproportionate. I agree with, with Brian about the renters. I, I just think that anytime there's a special deal, so if there's a, a tax treaty, a commercial tax treaty, you, you've admitted that the system you have is lousy, so here's the deal we're going to give you. That's in my view. Instead, I would rather work on controlling the spending so that the taxes are more fair for everybody.
All right.
But I think in, for Rory, and I think it would be a good idea to get the information to see what it would look like potentially.
Again, I'm, I'm, we're happy to dig in and produce as, as clear, both sides of the argument kind of report as we can. It's easier for us to see the operational challenges because we live them and we, you know, sort of recognize the, the challenges more readily than we might recognize the, the benefits that folks have seen. So, I recognize that we need to go out there and, and actually thoroughly vet this if the council wants to give this consideration.
So, I think what I would like to see is the actual numbers of, of what we believe are owner occupied year-round homes versus commercial property in town, what percentage of the tax roll those things represent, right? And also some suggestion from Councilman McIntee on what type of a homestead exemption. Are you looking for 5%? Are you looking for 10%? We would have to know those numbers. I think before we could move anything on this issue, I'd like to see the demographic issue, the actual financial issues, and, and be able to say, how many people is this going to impact?
So, I bring this up for discussion purposes. When I decide that I'd like to direct the town manager as well as the finance director to look into the feasibility of this, I would expect that that would entail all those details that Deb has mentioned. I say this from the sense of, I have concern about the increasing tax rate in the forthcoming years. You know, we already have a young people retention- You know, we already have a young people retention issue, and I tend to bring this up a lot, but it's a real issue. I'm a 26-year-old young professional, and I personally don't have the ability to expend the monies to afford my own home in SK. And if we are going to increase taxes year after year and provide that environment, I don't see how the median housing price can go down. It can only go up. So in order for, to offer, you know, a, some sort of incentive for new homeowners in SK, I think we should look into the feasibility of this. I think we owe it to the residents of SK to look into the feasibility of this. As I mentioned earlier, there is concern in town about the increasing taxes as a result of the proposed budget showing various increases in spending to various departments. The school's looking for an increase in the property tax transfer. The capital investments to the schools that we're planning to spend in the next five or six years. I believe that we owe it to our taxpayers to look into the feasibility of this. I expect if we do move forward and do direct the town manager and the finance director to look into this, that we would get a full, in-depth, detailed financial analysis into how this could work, or whether it will not work, and why it won't work. That's all.
So, it's a, I mean, I think, to me, it's a question of how much time you have, Rob, to devote to studying this matter when, you know?
So, a lot of the information is out there. This is not something that is foreign to municipalities in Rhode Island. As I mentioned during the work session, there've been a number of municipalities that have put homestead exemptions in place and then repealed homestead exemptions. I have envisioned that it would make sense for us to communicate with the tax assessors in those communities and sort of find out what happened there. And I think that with regard to, you know, just the descriptive data of what the impact is on the proportion of taxpayers, those are numbers we've got, and that's easily put together. We could sort of run some numbers to figure out what the impact would be on those who would be exempted based on estimates of, based on who's in and who's out, where the tax bills go, kind of thing. Although, it's not going to be a perfect estimate, but we can do a rough estimate on just sort of who gets their bills in town and who doesn't. It's not an extraordinary amount of time for us to put together a pretty comprehensive report, I think. I, I think that this is a suggestion that needs to be thought of in the vein that I think it's being offered, which is, we need to find a solution. We need to find a way to make sure that we're not just increasing taxes without thinking about alternatives. And I, you know, I fully respect and appreciate the opportunity to look at an alternative. We've talked about growth as one of the alternatives that the community needs to think hard about, and I personally think that growth, and particularly commercial, real estate development and growth, is an important part of the solution for South Kingstown. I think this, you know, is another idea that we need to explore. We'll run it to ground and make sure the council has a full assessment of the idea. Now, it's not going to end up being a 200-page treatise on homestead exemptions, but it will be a solid report to the council.
And were you thinking of a particular timeline, Rory? I mean, I feel like maybe if we can get something, you know, once we get done with the budget season, have a report, then we can decide if we want to have a work session to talk.
So, I actually really like the idea of a work session with this as one of the items. The problem that Councilman McIntyre is pointing to is an urgent problem. We do have to get a handle on the increase in our tax levy. And I think we need to sort of work through all of the possible solutions. I think that a work session that looks at sort of the, not just this year's budget, but looks at, you know, the future and tries to identify multiple solutions and have a conversation about what might work, what might not work, would be very useful. So I think a work session makes sense. I think this is certainly one of the items that we should, you know, have on an agenda for a work session, looking at tax, for want of a better phrase, tax control.
Okay. I think, again, let's let you go through your process. We'll circle back and we'll schedule that work session when it becomes-
So I'd like to make a motion that the council directs the town manager, working alongside the finance director, to look into and provide a report, to report back to the council within a timeframe determined by the town manager.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second. I don't think anybody disagrees with you, Rory. The taxes are bordering on unaffordable, and this is one way that, that could potentially solve it. But I think Rob's suggestion of a work session is probably a good one. Because we need to, we need to control the spending. That's the bottom line, I think.
And let me add to that, to be presented to us at a work session.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. And that motion carries. And it brings us to item eight, comments from interested citizens.
Jim O'Neill, Matunik, hoping we could speak, or the audience could speak to Rory's request there. I think what you should do, and I think what Rory was indicating, there's no obligation to go forward with the enabling legislation to have this in your arsenal. You don't have to put it into effect, but you have to pass that muster first. Get it done. Do what Narragansett did. Narragansett got the enabling legislation first, up to 10%. But it's up to the council to even consider it after that. That's easily done. Let's do it. Because right now, you're looking at 1612 with the old numbers, 90 cents to a dollar for fire, we're over 17 bucks per thousand. Narragansett's about 10 and a half, Wesley about 1175, and Charlestown under 11. Joe has said it for five years. I've said it for 18 years. This is now becoming unaffordable. And if you're worried about affordable housing, pretty soon, we're going to have the manager's number here. I think he mentioned a few months ago that maybe 25 percent of our assessed value here is homes under 250,000. You're going to have plenty of homes to sell for new buyers. People cannot afford these numbers. And I'm in real estate. I lose more business to Charlestown and Narragansett ever. And those people in Narragansett, they love, for a $400,000 home, getting a $600 check each year. It's phenomenal. Then they go spend it. Spend it on local business. But right now, we are just being eaten up by our school budget. 75.12, I think, is our latest number. And I don't know where we're going to be with the new bonds and the maintenance stuff. We could be approaching 80%. What about the rest of us? What about the other 20,000 people in this town? What about URI, et cetera? I mean, this is absolutely insanity. So really, getting the enabling legislation in is a no-brainer. Do it. You could do it tonight. Do it the next meeting. Get that in. Get it on the books. And I would like to believe, computer-wise, we can find out who lives in town. Heaven's sakes, match it with the voting rolls. If you don't vote here, then you don't, you're not eligible for it. It's that simple. And now, Narragansett is a different situation. They do have a list of who rents their homes out for the college season, from September to May. They have that list. They're not eligible either. These are for the full-time residents who assessments have gone out of sight with the high, you know, the high, you know, high-priced land and building that's taken place. These are, keep these people here, and they're mostly seniors. And if you look at the numbers now, I think we're 18, 19 percent of people over 60 in this town. We don't want to lose them. They're an economic engine for them. But this tax stuff, what is happening here is just unimaginable where we're going. $17 with fire and the new tax rate on the old, 17. Next door, 10 and a half. The other next door, 11 and a half. This is insanity. So anyway, I really think this is easy to do, to get the enabling legislation here. Mike can tell me if I'm wrong, but I think that's how it works. Okay. Yep. And there's no reason you had to take this out on commercial. I'm not even suggesting that. I don't think Rory was suggesting that. Commercial, unlike Narragansett, is the same as our residential rate. What this will come down to, do we have 1,000, 1,500 people out of state that maybe might have an average assessment, $700, $800,000? And will they have, will they have to cough up $2 million more to help those way underneath that are saving $2 million? That, that might be the formula. But at least, get this weapon in your arsenal so we can move forward with it. Thank you.
Is there any other public comments tonight? Any comments at the table? All right, very good. Town manager's report.
We're getting there on the new form for the flag report, but we're still working. So I'm going to share with you the latest iteration. Not quite as standardized as I think we'll ultimately be, but, so the first big significant item on here is food truck ordinance. As we discussed earlier this evening, when discussing the peddler's license that was applied for, the state passed legislation last year changing the rules on food trucks. Food trucks are now licensed by the state, and the state has established a regime where we can control where, when, and how many food trucks are allowed in town. But we cannot sort of deal with them as peddlers. We can't, we can't keep them moving along. If they want to park, they can park where we've identified as places where they can park. And then the other aspect of the food truck issue from our perspective is, over the last couple of years, the only place we've really seen food trucks is on private property, and not all of those food trucks have been parked in zones where food service is allowed. So we want to make sure that we're dealing with both licensing of on-street food trucks and in-park on public property food trucks, as well as the zoning regulations for food trucks on private property to make sure that we're not creating inconsistencies. So that set of rules has been drafted by Amy Goins in Mike's office and is ready to be reviewed by the planning board. The planning board will make a recommendation on the zoning aspects of the rules, and then a whole package, rules related to zoning and rules related to licensing will be coming to the council in June. And hopefully, we can get there fairly quickly. It is, there's a lot of nitty-gritty to this one, so I don't know how smoothly the conversation's going to go with the planning board. I don't know how easy the conversation's going to go with the town council. It's also, comes back to sort of equity issues in a lot of ways. One of the principles that we've tried to keep in mind is that this is a neat, innovative new business, but they compete very directly with brick-and-mortar restaurants that contribute significantly to the community in many ways, including tax payments that rolling vehicles just won't. So we want to make sure we're doing right by existing businesses, and to the, to the extent that it can be done, right by these new and emerging businesses as well. Not an easy set of issues on some level, but we've been working on it for quite some time. Amy has been sharpening and re-sharpening her pencil on this one, and I'm optimistic about the proposed ordinance that she's presented to the planning board. Open dumpster ordinance, this is also one of those issues that we wish we could get through more quickly, but we've had a number of complaints, as the council knows, about people using 30-yard dumpsters as their trash receptacles. Rather than hiring a trash service, folks have been using dumpsters and just throwing household waste into open dumpsters, which creates smells and rodent issues for some of the neighbors. So we've been working on a dumpster ordinance, and that is soon to be before the council. But again, we're dealing with it as a zoning issue, and the planning board has not yet seen anything on this one. I do want to talk about transparency concerns. This is a significant challenge. This is a real problem, and it's one that I'm intending to take on as aggressively and as directly as I possibly can. We've had a number of citizens who've expressed concern about their, what they perceive to be deliberate or ill-willed attempts to hide information from the public or not, not get information to the public. This concerns me greatly because, you know, the one thing that I'm really all about is making sure that the public's business is done in public view. There's, there's no excuse for not getting the public's business done in public view. I want to read from a letter sent to a person who had made an APRA request regarding a recent violation of the Open Meetings Act that occurred here. This is a letter from the Director of Administrative Services to the woman who had written in concerned about this meeting she had seen or heard something about. Quote, "The town can confirm a meeting of the Economic Development Committee Data Subcommittee was held on January 29, 2019. Regrettably, the town can also confirm the meeting was not properly noticed per the State of Rhode Island's Open Meetings Act. The town manager became aware on Wednesday, February 1, 2019, that the EDC Data Subcommittee held its 29th of January meeting without proper notice. The town manager's office, including the personnel division, opened an investigation, and the solicitor's office was contacted. As part of the investigation, the Secretary of State's website was reviewed, and several planning department staff members were interviewed, including the planning director who attended the meeting. For the record, I also attended parts of this meeting. We had a council meeting that night, so I was in and out of that meeting, but I also did attend that meeting. During the course of the investigation, it was confirmed that the planning director was aware in advance of the January 29 meeting, but that the EDC staff member, or committee members, were not notified of the fact that the meeting had not been posted." Now, my understanding of what the circumstances that gave rise to this failure to notice the meeting is that there was an absence in the office that week. And with the woman who typically makes the postings out, it simply didn't get done. My further understanding is that when the planning director was told that the meeting had not been posted, she decided in the afternoon before the meeting was going to be held that, I don't remember the time, but 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock, that it was too late to call the subcommittee members and let them know that the meeting hadn't been posted and therefore should be canceled. The meeting was held, and when I discovered that the meeting was held, I asked first, what can we do to fix this? So we spoke to the town solicitor, and the town solicitor's advice was, the meeting's got to be re-held. You've got to do it again, because nothing, nothing, you know, that wasn't posted can be an official meeting. I asked whether we could post the meeting minutes, and whether we could post to the website the tape recording of that meeting. Because again, for me, transparency is a fundamental core value of government. The meeting minutes were not produced, and the recording has not been posted to the website as of yet. But it is available, and I intend to make sure that that recording is available for anyone who wants to listen to what happened during the course of that meeting. The entire, I think it was one hour and some odd minutes, is available for anyone who wants to listen to that meeting. The meeting was subsequently re-held, and, you know, I, I want folks to know, this was an error. This was a mistake. This was not, this was not a deliberate intent on anyone's, by anyone, a deliberate intent or a deliberate effort by anyone to hide anything from the public. Anyone who listens to this, this recording, which I did this afternoon again because I'm a glutton for punishment, it's a data subcommittee meeting. It wasn't, it wasn't a particularly exciting meeting. There was nothing controversial discussed. The committee has no voting rights. The committee has no authority other than to sort of talk about the data sources available to the town government to understand what's happening to the community. And that really was the gist of that conversation, was all about what, what data can we get our hands on? What traffic counts might be available? What, you know, alumni association data might we be able to get from URI? What, that was the nature of the- to get from URI? That was the nature of the conversation. And again, the meeting was held a second time. I'm trying to foster an environment where transparency is one of our core values. I think that that is an important thing for us to do here, but I'm also trying to make sure that we admit our errors and that we own our errors when we make them. So I see someone who wants to make sure I own this error. I'll let him have his say, Mr. President.
Are we allowed to respond to that part of this since you can't figure it out from the agenda?
The town manager's indicated that he's open to discussing this, so...
If I may, thank you, Mr. President. I spoke here a month ago, being a Route 1 resident, and I spoke how concerned neighbors everybody else was a little over a year ago, scenic highway. There was no advertising for us to attend a meeting. Route 1 is over 60 years old, 60, 70 miles an hour, I'll comment on that. We have turnoffs, almost 45 degrees to 60 degrees off the travel lane to take a right into development neighborhoods. We have some areas where you have to almost come to a stop in the travel lane to take a right to get your home. Many driveways like mine are on that highway on a curve. A lot of times, it is suicide. But the point I'm trying to get at here, no transparency. You could have put an ad in the paper for over nine months, late in 2017, all the way into 2018, before the contract was led on this, to let the people know what was happening. And this is what this director of planning, it's her management style. We never know. And let me read something that she just sent, and you know I brought up the Tower Hill Road about a month ago, where she's circumventing our representatives up in Providence by going directly to DOT, going directly to lobbyists for the Builders Association. But let me just read you something on Tower Hill Road here, just to show you the manager doesn't know what he's talking about. And this is on the Tower Hill DOT from Chelsea Seaford to a whole bunch of folks, but not the neighbors, of course, up there. But let me read you this paragraph, and in paragraphs, I'm quoting, "We do still need to discuss outreach to the property owners and whether the outreach is simply to keep them in the loop or to get their input." These are people who rely on Route 1 business and Old Tower Hill there, excuse me, Old Tower Hill Road. This is something they should have been, they should have been part of the discussion. You either are against business, but they should have been part of the discussion, not just the trees and so on and so forth, but the egress in and out of property to make sales. This is what Seaford does all the time. I was just up to, been up to the General Assembly, working with your reps who work on your behalf. We have, let's see, H5645, H5640, H5484, Senate Bill 0404, and another House bill, H5646, on subdivisions, everything else. She's never there. Planning directors of Narragansett are there, Charleston, Exeter, Coventry, and I think we had Middletown. We had Maria Mack there from our planning board, but you never see Ms. Seaford there. And if you haven't figured it out by now, the chaos that is going on in this town, in this town hall, you need to have an executive session to discuss whether she should be employed by this town. And I'm at the point where I have to probably hire an attorney, because after I brought up the fact that, how it was mentioned many times about open space, oh, forget it, we're not going to spend any money on it, the very next day, this woman emails the Conservation Commission saying that the key areas that I brought up, that we have to look at whether or not those continue on the priority list. Now, does this mean I can never go to the planning board? Is this retaliation? The day after, I brought that up here, that email, and it didn't go to Zanetsky, it went right to the Conservation Commission. This is how things are going on here. I can only suggest to you that you take the mothballs out of your nose nostrils and know what's going on from the stench at that office and planning.
Mr. President. So I'm not prepared to respond to any of that. I have no idea. I'm not, Jim, it's...
No more, please. Jim.
Put up with him. He shouldn't be here either. You need to get an executive session together and figure out, these guys think this town is broken. There's nothing broken in this town. What right do they have operating with this so-called their policy? This is nutsable, absolutely nuts.
Jim, your comments are inflammatory, and this is not a forum for you to express them in this way. It's not okay. You can write a letter to us, if you'd like, outlining all your complaints, but I don't think it's fair the way that you've, you know, insulted town employees here. Please, I shouldn't have let you speak in the beginning, but Rob asked that you be allowed to, but this is really not an item for discussion tonight.
Well, you can't keep hiding this able. This is known throughout town. You need to discuss the issue on who works here. You really do.
All right. So again, I'm pretty well convinced that transparency concerns belong in the red flag. We definitely have some strong emotions out there around this. Folks, without a doubt, have formed strong opinions about whether or not particularly the planning department is operating in as transparent a way as we need it to. I will point out that when the error of this meeting came to my attention, I began a review of all other folks and meetings, and it's clear to me that we have not historically been posting the T-Squared RC, the Traffic and Transportation Review Committee meetings. Those have not been properly noticed under the Open Meetings Act either because of the way that we've conceived of them. We've thought of them as internal meetings, but in reality, had that meeting been posted, the error that was described here with regard to Old Tower Hill Road would not have occurred. So it is necessary for us to learn from our mistakes and to think broadly when mistakes are made. There was a small, I would argue inconsequential, meeting that was not properly posted, and from that error, we've reviewed, or that error sparked a review of all of our procedures with regard to other meetings. And I think that we are going to have a better system for making sure that the public is aware of what's going on at T-Squared RC now. The point is that we need to recognize that it's not our way or the highway. It's not policies being advanced by staff. Everyone wants to achieve the policies, the goals, and the objectives that the council has set for us. And if, you know, we're failing to do that, then, you know, you need to let me know that you perceive that we're failing to do that, and I will take every action I need to remedy that. In my view, the staff in town hall, to a person, has the best of intentions, has the best interests of the community in mind, and wants to be successful for the town. Every single employee who works in this building tries to do the right thing every time he or she comes in the door. I believe that, and I have confidence in the employees who work here in town hall. No one is perfect. No one avoids all mistakes all the time. It's said that hell is filled with good intentions and heaven is made of good works. When our good intentions aren't getting us to good works, we need to change the way we're doing that work. We learned from this mistake. Happily, it was not a mistake where public rights of a significant nature were involved. The right was the right to hear what was said, and the recording is available so that what was said can be heard. Luckily for us, it was not something that determined a property right or determined an interest of an individual. But we have done that in the past. We've done that with, in fact, we made determinations tonight based on a recommendation without publicly noticed meetings at the T-Squared RC. So we've got work to do. That's always the case. We're committed to doing it. We're committed to learning when an error is made, and we're committed to making sure that we go forward with a full eye toward the public interest and the public's expression of its interests. I know that Mr. O'Neill can be difficult to listen to sometimes, but I appreciate his comments. I appreciate his feedback and recognize that it comes from good intentions. With that, the minor concerns. We have begun to negotiate with the South County Hospital. As you know, the South County Hospital wants to expand its parking facility over at the Town Farm Park property. We have begun, Terry, John, and I sat down the other day with a representative from South County Hospital, and we've started that communication. We expect to have something for the council in the relatively near future. Informal property tax reviews are underway. That is what you see when you walk in the building. You see the Lawrence sign saying revale hearings. Our contractor, Vision Appraisal, has started those informal reviews and should be wrapping up. Gene, when? The 18th or 19th of this month. Appraisals are being sought for the Marina Park and Watson House properties. Townwide Radio Project Consultant Selection Board met last week, and they have at least one good proposal. I don't know that they've come to a final determination yet. I haven't been informed of that. But they have met, and I attended that meeting, and they have clearly got at least one good offer or. Permit fees associated with school construction project, this is an interesting issue that came up and one that we need to track going forward. The work being done at the Matunik Elementary School was bid out by the school department, and in the last couple of weeks, we've had subcontractors coming in saying that they want the fees waived because it's a public project, which is fine, but that's not what the contract says, and we don't have privity of privity, privity, privy of privity, of contract with the subcontractors. So, one, we don't give those waivers to subcontractors because we don't contract with them, and two, the main contract doesn't talk about the waiver. So we need to keep that in mind, and when we're doing public projects, and we've had this conversation with the school department, we need to make sure that the appropriate language is in there if that's the desired circumstance. The way the contract was written, the way the RFP was written, the contractor would have bid as if he, she, they, it were going to pay the fees. So waiving the fees after they've bid without a waiver as part of the negotiated agreement would have been an injustice. Successes, the West Kingston Park Playground currently being installed. The Beach Pavilion interior improvements are now underway, and the contract with RGB for the Guild Structure Assessments is in progress. We've got those three good projects moving forward. Now on to the next part of this report that we're trying to sort of work through the forms on. Again, one of the objectives of the new flag is to provide statistical data so that the council has sort of a snapshot and understanding of what's going on with the various departments. Just a couple of data points on the rec. department. Revenue so far in February, revenue in February, I'm sorry, that's the complete month. And rec. center attendance in January, February of '18 and '19. And then, revenue and expenditure summaries from the finance department. 78% of the budget has been collected. Of all the revenues that we expect to collect during the fiscal year, 78% have been collected. On the expenditure side of what we anticipated we would spend, 68% has been spent. The estimated surplus in terms of collection is 3.2%. We're going to collect 3.2% more than we had anticipated. And in terms of, on the expenditure side, we expect that we will spend about 1.5% less than was budgeted. That's encouraging. It's $384,000, but the three-year average for the preceding three years was 2.7% under projected expenditure. So we're closer to what we actually budgeted this year. And that is the manager's report. One question, and we were talking about this today at the staff meeting. Are there data that the council would like to see in particular? Is there any particular number that you'd love to see on a report?
I don't know. Anybody?
Nothing comes to the top of mind, but I think we could get back to you with suggestions.
I think it might be nice to have actually sort of a variety. I mean, I know we compile an annual report each year, and Amy puts a lot of work into, so I imagine she's tracking a lot of those things.
Right. So what we're contemplating is sort of a mix of things that vary a lot from month to month and sort of occasional, sort of seeding it with occasional interesting statistics. Things like the number of beach passes during the run-up to the summer being sold.
New housing permits, I think.
Yep, new housing permits.
Or sales, you know, you pay the fee when you sell a house, maybe that kind of thing. Yeah, we could see those kind of in real time.
Yep. Yep. Good.
Fleet basis, maybe?
Every other, or whatever seems...
Doesn't have to be every meeting.
Whatever seems feasible for staff to be able to manage would be...
Yeah, I think if you're going to do different data sets, maybe even quarterly, different, something quarterly.
Yep. Okay. That's right in line with what we were thinking, so good. Great.
All right. Solicitor's report?
All right. That brings us to appointments.
I'll make a resolution to appoint Eileen Dyer to the library board for a term to expire July 2020.
Second. Very good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I think that was all our appointments tonight. Already done 12A, and that brings us to 12C. Resolution rescinding an award of bid, maybe we can take this with D as well. Resolution rescinding an award of bid granted on November 27th, 2017 to M&amp;J Construction for the Animal Shelter Post and Beam Rehabilitation Project in accordance with all bid specifications in an amount not to exceed $28,175. So we're rescinding that. And then, resolution D is authorizing an award of bid to Superstructure Building Company of Waits Corner Road in an amount not to exceed $25,220, including a contingency, and as further described in a memo from the facility superintendent to the town manager dated February 28th.
Mark Russo. So as Rob alluded to in the work session, we're on to round three here at the animal shelter, and hopefully, item D will put this to the end. So that's why I'm asking you to approve the rescission of the contract with M&amp;J Construction, and we'll move on with Superstructure. I called all their references for Superstructure, and they all came back A-plus. No one could speak anything higher up there. So, their local business. I met with them last Tuesday, and I look forward to working with them.
Yeah, sounds good. All right. Any questions, or do I hear a motion on these items?
I just have one question. So in the letter, in the memorandum, we see that it wasn't installed per specifications. Can you just tell me what, like, what happened in 2010 or whenever it was?
It took about three years to build that building, and when they... It took about three years to build that building, and when they were installing the facade on the post and beam out front, they didn't install it correctly. I looked it up in the specifications, and it called for the pine boards to be sealed on all six sides. It was only sealed on one side, and it was a shoddy flashing job, so the water got behind, and just, the building just exploded.
So I guess where I'm leading with this, whoever they are, are they financially liable for what happened here?
It's been, since 2012, we took possession of that building, so that contractor's gone.
So we have no monetary recourse?
Very good. Do I hear a motion on these items?
Motion to approve 12C and D.
Second.
So moved. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This motion carries unanimously. Item I is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to, or 12F, I should say, an award of bid to Taska Ford, 250 Webster Square in Berlin, Connecticut, for a Ford F-150 responder vehicle with trade-in allowance in accordance with pricing per RI, Master Price Agreement Number 551, in a total amount not to exceed $31,521, further described in a memo from the police chief to the town manager. Looks like you got a number of vehicles up here, chief. If you want to just go through the list for us, we can...
We have that vehicle, just spoke of. That's a replacement pickup truck that we've had for several years. This particular vehicle is more like a police interceptor, and we can use it. We need to replace the pickup truck anyway, but this one we can use as a patrol vehicle and four-wheel drive, so, so, that's a better replacement. And the other vehicles are normal, the other five vehicles, three of the police interceptors to replace those that are worn out, and the two, the two other vehicles, Equinox, Chevrolet Equinox is there for, to replace unmarked vehicles and detectors.
And then I think if you want to take three in a row here, H actually retrofit some of the old equipment onto the new vehicles.
Right. What happens when we change a vehicle or they're refitted with any of the equipment that we can still use? So if it'll fit that equipment, we'll use it again. If the vehicle's changed or with the Equinox, well, they don't need all of the equipment because they're unmarked.
Right.
But the interceptors need to have all that equipment shifted over, and sometimes it's not, it won't fit because they changed the design of the vehicle. So that's what that $20,000 is for, the upfit of all of the vehicles.
Be all right to take three together?
I just had a quick question. So most regular interceptors are not all-wheel-drive? They're just rear wheel or front wheel, or?
They're all-wheel-drive.
Oh, they are? Okay.
The good thing about the pickup truck is that that's four-wheel-drive. They say over eight inches of snow, it's better to have four-wheel-drive than all-wheel-drive. I've never had that problem. So it's good to have a few regular four-wheel-drive vehicles, and this pickup truck will do that. The old one would not do that. But all-wheel-drive is good, you know, it's a lot better than the rear-wheel-drive Cruisers. We had all-wheel-drive Cruisers because they're lowered to the ground. Having the all-wheel-drive or four-wheel-drive is good for the city.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Make a motion to approve Agenda Items 12F, G, and H.
Second.
So moved. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item I is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Liberty Chevrolet of Wakefield, Mass, for one 2019 non-transport ambulance Chevrolet Silverado pickup, crew cab four-by-four, per bid specifications, in an amount not to exceed $34,384, including trade-in allowance, further described in a memo from the director of EMS to the town manager.
Good evening, Craig Stanley.
Sorry.
Vehicle here is to replace the current supervisor vehicle that we have. It's approaching 100,000 miles, and it's a 2015. We elected to go to a different configuration. The vehicle that we currently have carries a lot of weight. The Highway Department, we've had a history of maintenance with it. We're going through a lot of brakes, a lot of tires, so we elected to go to a heavier vehicle. It will get a lot, longer life out of the vehicle. And also go into a configuration of an insert, so down the road, six to seven years, that we expect the life of the vehicle will be longer, where we can just take the insert and move it into another vehicle. And that would save us down the road of actually purchasing another vehicle similar. The price range for, to replace the Expedition for the amount of equipment, the insert, is close to $90,000. So I felt this was a better option for us, to go to the pickup truck, better maintenance, and then down the road, I'm just replacing a vehicle, the entire, the entire vehicle. One advantage to this is the way the compartment is configured. On most calls, we take out a certain amount of equipment, typically the same amount of equipment. With this vehicle, we can do that from the passenger side of the vehicle, where the SUV, the employees are at the rear of the vehicle, where the subject car is coming behind them. So this will be a more of a safety vehicle than we could previously have. And I and J actually are related.
Yeah.
To the two.
All right. And do you, you can, and K, too, the laptops and...
Yeah, the laptops, we currently have three laptops. They are used to record our patient care reports, and data is uploaded to the state. And also, we have to get signatures from physicians, nurses, and patients. The current laptops we have are 2013 and 2015. They have exceeded their life quite a bit, so these are to replace those. These are ruggedized laptops. I expect a long life out of them. And we're able to get these through a co-op at a pretty good price compared to what we had other vendors, so fairly competitive. This company was the cheapest on the co-op.
Any questions for Craig? All right. Yeah, do we want to bundle these ones together, too?
I'll make a motion that we approve Items 12I, J, and K.
Second.
So moved. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Thank you. And that brings us to the end of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously, and the time is 9:07.